So we've just come out of non-public, so I'll call to order the East Kingston Elementary School Board. It is 5:46. We will have public input for 30 minutes. Each person has three minutes to speak. So we will open a public comment right now. If anyone in the public has something to say, please let us know. I'm going to move to approval of the minutes for October 14th. Any...
Is there anything that needs to be changed? Motion to approve the minutes from October 14th?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Central office update?
Thank you. This will in large part be our budget update from the Finance Office. We've spent quite a bit of time working on the document you have in front of you for first read tonight and look forward to presenting it to you and getting any of your questions and feedback so that we can come back next month with any answers to questions that you have this evening. I know Brandon is prepared to speak to the budget as well, so I'll turn it over to both of you.
Sure. Okay. So you did pass out. So I just want to remind you, your budget is made up of what used to be two sections. Now it's going to be three sections. It's your general fund, your food service fund, and what will eventually become the grants fund. So if you remember, if you've been in our joint board meetings, the grants used to be appropriated as part of the SAU. That happened many, many moons ago. And but for several years now, the administrators have really told us for legal or not other grants, it's East Kingston School District, not the SAU. And so instead of flowing it through the SAU and appropriating it as part of the joint board, we are moving those. So on the second page, I did put the grant allocation. Now, that is not a guaranteed amount of grant money. So we never, at this point in time, we do not know how much grant money we're going to have next year. And so in the SAU, we had about $4 million because there's some cooperative grants that have always been in the cooperative. And that what flowed through the SAU was about, we appropriated $4 million. But if I look at the decrease in grant money over the years, it was more like $2.7 million that we were actually spending per year. So I didn't want to scale it down to the 2.7 in case we did get more. So we said, okay, let's go 3.5. And we appropriated, or we spread the appropriation across the districts in a proportion that they use it. So by doing this, it's actually no money raised in taxation. And so how grants work is we would only spend it if we're getting a good revenue. So yes, you have to appropriate it as part of the budget because it's the authority to expend. But when we set the revenues, revenue and expense, so no money will be raised in taxation. It's just page two.
No. I was going through the rest of it.
Yeah, it's just this page right here. But the first two, the first page, I put the summary of what does impact your taxes. And that is your general fund. So the food service fund, again, that is revenue equals expense, so that has no impact on taxation. But the general fund, that is where your tax impact would be seen. Okay? And so we always historically look at the general fund and food service fund together because it is one number. And so in here, it still looks at it together. And then at the bottom, I put the changes. So between the two funds, there's a change of $214,991. And at the bottom part of it, we put exactly what those changes are. So of the $214,000, $123,000 of it was held in dental. And $94,000 of it was salary. And that is, for salary, everyone's put in at stepping per the collective bargaining agreement or a 3% increase for all non-union staff. Okay?
Sorry. For paraprofessionals, it was a 4%.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes, sorry. And we do make equity, our market adjustments as needed. So as you can see, and then the first student, that is our multi-year contract with First Student. So you will see that makes up the majority of it. We do have a lot of negatives, especially in the areas of special education. And then Brandon, I don't know if you want to go through the major changes?
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, other than what Molly said, special ed, you can see that there are decreases across the board there. With transportation, we don't have students currently who we have in our building right now or expect to be here that need specialized transportation. So we've decreased that significantly. The special ed contract and services, that was moving our occupational therapist from three days a week to two based on students that we currently have either in preschool or that are currently here. And we do not have the need right now for that third day. The special ed tuition was students that are going outside of East Kingston for their education. And again, we do not have any students that are currently here that we need to contract with for outside services. We do have some preschoolers that attend our partner schools, which are either Swayze School in Brentwood or Exeter Developmental Preschool. So we're expecting those students who are there, they're three years old, to be back again if needed.
And so with the decreases in special education, we were comfortable making the decreases, recognizing we have trust funds if there's a student to move in. So on your current year financial, I do have all of your trust fund balances on here? Mine's a little fuzzy. But I think it's, I think it's $311,000, you're spending trust.
Yeah, 311,844.
Yeah.
Do you have questions on anything special related to right now?
No, no, no.
Changes? So the other decreases were student body activities, things like El Nova or field trips. We took a look at, you know, the past years on what we've used out of that line and realized over the last few years, we didn't need as much as we were budgeting for, so we reduced that. Office of District Superintendent, you can speak on that?
Sure. So we have the assessment to all the districts that how our office gets funded. So if you remember in the joint board, you had taken a vote then. And we collectively have a 0% increase. But as you change in relation to other districts, some went up, some went down. And you're on the winning side.
Those two increases that we didn't touch on yet, the new computer equipment, I'm not sure if everyone understands this right now, but we received a donation probably, I think about four years ago, significant donation specifically to be used for technology. With that donation, we purchased all interactive screens for every classroom. And we've been purchasing student Chromebooks or staff devices over the last four years using the donation that is now zero. And the way our, I guess, technology system works, when students enter first grade, they get a Chromebook that's assigned to them. So we purchase all new Chromebooks for all incoming first graders. And they're on a five-year cycle, so those Chromebooks stay with that child until they leave here. And then those are recycled out and the new ones put in. So with that, we had to budget for new computer equipment for some of our staff who are up also over those five years. And then any new first graders that we're going to have next year, which is why you see a significant increase in the technology line.
Are those purchased like through the SAU or how is that?
The SAU purchases for all the schools, which is cheaper that way to do it for just us. And then we pay the SAU back whatever we...
Yeah, so we usually make buys through the cooperative. It's like going to BJ's rather than your grocery store. But we do purchase it directly to the East Kingston budget. It's just usually we try to loop it in with a buy to go to BJ's.
And then the other area, we've already talked about this, but that's officially in air now, is our new reading program. We don't know, we're starting the pilot in December, so we don't know where we're going yet. But the $28,000 was the higher of the two that we're piloting.
Brandon, is it reading or writing?
Both.
Oh, they're, they're, is it combined?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the $28,000 increase that we, it's a significant increase from the past year.
So overall, it does, it might seem higher percentage than you're used to in the past. But I just wanted to remind you all, where, when we presented the joint board, how we went over the health insurance increases, and it ranged anywhere from 14.8% to 21%, low 21%. So it's very, very high this year.
When was that conversation? I don't remember that conversation happening. It might have been one of the board meetings I missed.
Yeah, so at the joint board meeting, when we presented our budget for the Office of the Superintendent, we highlighted one of the big reasons we kept things low and one of the big reasons that SLT members took a lower raise just to keep it down, knowing that these were coming to the districts. So every year, we get our health insurance increases. It used to be called a GMR guaranteed maximum rate. So for many, many years, we would get the GMR in the fall. And we would get the actual rate in the spring as to what our insurance was going up. They went away with that two years ago, or last year, I think last year was the first year. Now they give us the rate now as to what we will see our health insurance increase for next year. And so that is the rate. And so they used to do one flat percentage for the whole SAU. That now is different per plan. So that's why when I showed that slide, I think I had like 10 different rate increases because each plan's different. So East Kingston offers different health plans than Stratum, than Kensington. Everyone's different. So, but they were all between 14.8% and 21%. So it is something that we are actively looking at for the future. A lot of districts are facing the same increase, and it's also in the private sector too. So it is the biggest driver in every single one of our budgets. And all of our budgets at the elementary level are with around this percent increase.
Can I ask a question about the grant again? So that $117,000, that's potential grant money that we might be able to grab for?
So, yes. So we, every year we get title grants, we get IDEA. We don't know how much you're going to get for this year. And so we make a projection, a conservative projection, because if you don't appropriate the funds, you cannot expend the funds. So we make a conservative estimate on how much grant money we think you're going to get. And then historically, we did it in the SAU. And we've said, okay, here's the SAU budget, please add $4 million for grants. And then we appropriate that money. Now we're moving it to the district budget. So this will be on board Article One, the grants, the food service fund and the general fund all added together.
So is it safe to say that $117 potential in grants, grant money could be applied to the increase or offset some of that increase or no? Depending on how, what the grants bore?
Well, it's not only what the grants bore, but a lot of times we anticipate what the grants, what grants we're going to get. So I believe Principal French already has plans for grants.
Yeah. I mean, a large percentage is IDEA, which is the special ed grant. You know, we, we, we have never been, or at least since I've been here, a Title I school. And as a result of that, two years ago, for whatever reason, I couldn't tell you why that the federal government made the change. But we also no longer receive Title IV funding, which for us, that was around $10,000 each year. And which was, which was a lot for us. And so that's no longer available either. So the biggest chunk is IDEA. We get a small percentage now for Title II, which is, I think this year it's around $4,000 and change, which we use for things like professional development, things like that. So we, we have, we have the grant money kind of earmarked already. I mean, there are some things that we could potentially talk about as far as the budget goes and looking at grants.
But once you plan for something in the budget, you can't really use grant money because that's called surplanting.
Yeah.
So we try to plan for the necessary items in that operating budget.
So just looking at it through the lens of the taxpayer, 5.8% increase potentially, it's not something that you could sort of draw a straight line from the grant money decreasing that increase.
I would say the largest driver of your percent increase is...
Yeah, health insurance, yeah, of course.
And the surrounding.
Yep.
As you go through, you know, each line, you're going to notice on the very far where it says percent change, if you go through there, you're going to see zeros almost everywhere. And, you know, the areas where we did make increases, it was 100% because of need. You know, those two areas, like I said, the technology and the reading program, I mean, other. So, you know, there's not much that we really added.
So can I, can I just, I see a discrepancy. So I see $38,000 under the proposed budget for '27 instead of $28,000.
That's a difference.
Nope. So the proposed budget in '27, if you look under the first line, I'm on page one.
Yeah.
It says regular instructional textbooks, which I'm assuming, Brandon, is what you mean by your reading and, the new reading and writing. That says $38,000. And then textbooks, reading program, 28.
Yeah, it's the increase because it was 10, see?
It was 10.
It was 10. There's the increase, 28. 28 is what's reflected here. This is an increase on this page.
So the front page is just showing your increases?
Not the actual, not the actual total.
So we're only, you're asking for $28,000, not $38,000?
Twenty, it's a, no, it'll be $38,000 total.
Total.
$28,000 for the reading program. So that's additional that we had.
Additional to the 10 grand that we already had there. Okay.
Yeah, so that first page is just showing what the increases are. And I do lump together certain expenses. So if you see supplies, it's usually like 10 supply lines together.
I also want to mention too, the $28,000 increase, it's going to be this year only, right? We're purchasing a new curriculum, all the books and everything. The only thing that would be purchased moving forward would be student workbooks or teacher workbooks. But the books that'll be in the classrooms, we're not going to be purchasing that every year.
Is it like an online component to that?
There's an online component for both programs we're looking at. But that's, but the books the kids are actually reading, those will be purchased one time.
And how does that differ from all the OG work that we've been doing? Like, how is it comparable? So we've done a lot of professional learning for OG. We've done this programmatic stuff with Wharton-Gillingham. We've trained the teachers. We've given the kid, like, there's been a real push for OG. And we've been very successful in that space. So for us to then turn around and then go purchase something, is it aligned to OG? Are we working, you know, what's the, what's the building of capacity for our kids and for the teachers who are in that space?
That's a great question. So OG is not going anywhere, especially K through two. That's the foundational skills that they're learning through OG. They're going to continue using those skills. The teachers are going to continue with the training. It's, the programs that we looked at and are piloting last spring, Trail Azir, a Massachusetts bookstore reading specialist, and the reading specialist from Kensington, betted a number of programs. And the two that were chosen fit with who we are as a school, making sure that OG is still going to be the foundation for our kids as a entry kindergarten. And this is going to be in addition to that. And I think I, I talked about the comprehension, you know, we're lacking in comprehension right now, vocab and the writing piece. So these two programs are going to hit those areas that we're lacking currently.
Well, and that's because OG is working specifically on phonics and that space, right? Not necessarily the comprehension. So my, my second question is, if we're focusing on K2 for OG, right? Which foundationally, we're trying to get kids. Is there a way to split the cost in half so that our three fives are getting it next year? And then the following year, we, we move in so that the cost is only half? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, if, if kids coming into kindergarten, first and second grade, that we know that they're getting OG and they're getting that training, and we're using that training with, with our teachers and our kids. Can we, supplement, supplement's not the right word. Can we just adjust it to next year paying for our three through five so that they can immediately start that work? And then the following year, add the other $14,000? So it's not just such a big gulp? Like, if they're, if they're, if we're training our K through twos in OG, why do they need another program? That's all I'm asking. Like, I don't, I don't feel, especially if it's brand new and we can get our three fives to get some data, like, is it working? Are they transitioning out of the, the second grade correctly? And we're only spending 14 grand for this year. That to me is a gradual release to the program versus, okay, we're going all in, K5, when we already went all in OG for K2. And I, believe me, I'm a full component of doing the whole package. You know, you're reading, writing, listening and speaking all at the same time for, you know, depth and rigor and understanding, right? But we just did three years of OG in K2, and now we're going to add another K2 component? I just don't, I don't see the need for it, especially when we're up 5.8%. And I'm not saying no to the second piece to that. It just would wait till next year.
When, so what I'm hearing is we might consider a two-year, spreading the cost over two years. That's something we can discuss in terms of how, what that looks like. That would be an administrative decision. So that's something that Brandon and the Director of Curriculum and I would work with to just figure out what makes the most sense.
Yes, and I'm not saying no to it. I get it. And I appreciate the, the writing is something that is needed. Like, we've worked on math and that was needed, right? So it's, it's, there's a need. And so therefore, we need to do something. And you have the people who you trust doing that. I just, I, I don't see the immediacy of the K2 right now. And so to be able to have that conversation and see what it looks like, to break it in half so that the K2 stays in their OG, and then that second, third grade, my guess is kids can waiver in and out. Like, we're going to still work and win. So if there's kiddos who need to be in the third grade, we'll have those workbooks for third grade in that reading space. And it would just alleviate, it would just be a gradual release, that's all, a stepping stone. And then the following year, we would, we would know more. We would know what to expect. We would know what kids it would benefit. And, you know, my curiosity is fifth grade. What do those fifth graders look like transitioning into CMS after using a program like this and having that? So I'm just, I'm asking for a conversation of what that would look like, splitting it in half.
So just doing some quick sum of math, just for optics purposes. Looking at the 5.8 increase to do that, it would drop it down to 5.67.
Okay.
So it's a 13th of a percent, I guess, when you look at it.
Right.
On the whole.
On the whole. Yep. But to do due diligence, I think both that, both those numbers need to be said. And a commerce, you know, we make decisions based on evidence and data, right? So...
Brandon, just real quick, one of the other things we noticed, you mentioned the salary increases, I think were 3%. You said across were 4%. And I think there was two line items that noted, a couple of specific salaries that increased. I think one was 5.2 and the other was 7.4, health services and guidance salaries.
So if it was, so teachers step and track. So if we are anticipating a track, it would be, so the teachers are going to step per the CBA. That's not 3%, it's whatever's documented in the CBA.
Okay.
And then if we have an anticipated track, then they would move across.
So track meaning if they received a second degree?
Or more credits, like masters, MA 15.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
And so there's a big grid. So depending on, we always check with the principals on who we anticipate to track.
Right.
Or who has tracked this year that we didn't budget for to track this year. So it might be someone that's already tracked, or it might be someone that's anticipated to track.
And our nurse and counselor are part of the collective bargain.
Yep.
Yeah, that you're tracking.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure I understood the difference between them and the other contracted flights. Yeah. Good.
I also saw, it looks like some decreases after our last conversation about Summer Institute, Brandon. So if you can maybe explain, summarize kind of what changes you made and...
So, yeah, so we, so based on, based on kind of where we are as Ms. Casey and I, who was the Director of the ESI last year, met in the fall after, we talked in September, I believe it was. I forget when, whenever we spoke.
September, October.
We took a harder look at it, knowing we were going to be working on our budget. And based on where we are right now with our students that were qualifying for summer programming, we reduced a paraprofessional, which was the major, the major decrease there. We still need a paraprofessional for any students that need parent support per their IP for the ESI. But the, the summer learning group that was more of the intervention students, tier two intervention students, we reduced, we reduced the number of paraprofessionals.
Okay. And there was also another, it looks like there was another, so the paraprofessional stipend, right? That's what you're talking about?
For ESI, yeah.
For ESI, yep. There was another, Summer Institute stipends, there was another decrease.
Yep.
So that's a different person?
So Summer Institute stipends are professional learning that the SAU puts on through what we do here. We haven't had as many participants as we did years past, so we reduced.
Reduced that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, my questions.
Any other questions? Do you have any, I know we've heard about the reading program and maybe how we can adjust for that income with two different options in December. Do we have any other requests?
So I, I do. I don't know if it's allowed, so I'm just going to ask and tell me no. But I would like to see, and maybe it will happen at joint board, where the other schools are. Like, you're saying, like, we're, we're at 5.8, maybe 5.67, whatever we land it. But that's, but where is Kensington also? Where is Brentwood? Like, and basically I'm asking because I want us to be able to tell the story correctly.
Yeah, it's absolutely doable to kind of send out a summary of where people are at in the December meeting. But people can still make changes after that December meeting. But I do caution you to compare yourself to those other schools because those other schools are also making staffing adjustments. So specifically Kensington and Brentwood, they actually have a teaching position that remains unfilled this year. So it's not that somebody's going to be ripped. It's, there's an unfilled position in both of those budgets in the current year. And they're just not planning on filling them.
So their budgets are going to go down significantly?
Honestly, they're more in line with yours.
Oh, okay.
So there's other needs of the buildings.
Okay.
So you can compare it, we can, we can do that, but I just caution you to, there are different needs. There's different collective bargaining agreements also. When you look at the budgets, right now, nobody is negotiating here. Whereas you actually have a teacher contract happening in Kensington and in Brentwood.
Okay.
So if you look at what we have as in Article One, it's not, you're going to, you're missing the whole teachers increases.
Right.
So there's, and same with Newfields. If you look at Newfields, you're going to be missing the paraprofessional increases because their parents are negotiating. If you look at Stratum, you're going to be missing the teachers. If you look at Kensington, you're going to be missing the teachers. And if you look at Brentwood, you're going to be missing, I think it's the teachers.
Yeah, we're looking at a lot of hard questions.
Yeah, so it's how to do it, do the analysis. I guess I'm, I guess the, you know, I know it's healthcare. I, you know, I know it's that piece really that's, that's pushing this. I just want to make sure that we as a board are clear with our taxpayers that it's not because we're not doing our due diligence.
True.
So however we do that, or however we can create that narrative, I would appreciate.
You know, I know obviously we've got a way to go for the deliverable, but not really. But I think the biggest thing is going to be, again, having talking points around the health insurance increases because that's, again, where the biggest cost increase is coming from. I think a lot of the other stuff is easy to speak to, but, you know, the general public, I don't think is going to really understand.
And so one of the things we're really doing in all districts, I don't know if any of you saw the cooperative video we put together last year, but we are doing that in all districts. And so Principal French will have a leading role. And if any of you likes a leading role, and we're also, we also, we also want to hear from the kids and have the kids tell the story as well, so...
Oh, love that, yeah. Well, it's the importance, the importance of...
My kid's not shy if you want to get her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The importance, you know, it's a blessing and a curse, right? We are a very small school and we run fiscally responsible. So I, I think, you know, it, that's a, it's wonderful, but we have to be thoughtful too.
Sure.
We don't have the grant stuff coming in.
And if anyone else wants a leading role in the video, just let Principal French know. Yeah, so we'll have, and we'll be able to post it. We'll play it during the public hearing and we'll have everybody available.
Okay. Any other budget questions?
So next month, we'll plan to come with some variations with the reading program. And if there's any other asks, just let us know.
When do we vote? When do we vote? December?
So you vote in December on what you want to take to a public hearing. I don't actually know if you actually need a vote in December, but we've always taken a vote in December to determine what you want to take to public hearing. Public hearing is in January, and that's where you hear what the public has to say. And so then you might have a change of heart. You might have different thoughts after hearing what the public has to say. And then at the end, the public hearing usually happens before the board meeting, and then the board meeting happens. Then you decide after you've heard the public, what you want to take to deliberative. Then we have the deliberative session. And then whatever comes out of the deliberative session is then placed on the ballot.
Valid, okay.
For it to be voted on. So that's the process.
Perfect.
And that December vote will be at the December board meeting?
Yes, you'll decide what you wanna take to the public hearing.
Yeah.
But again, that's just to decide the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then we also gave the current year financial and your board cap. There were some manifests over there floating around, if you guys. So there's just three, if you just wanna sign them off, going through the current year financial. So we do have the summer page on here, this is the first summer page of the year, because we are comparing to what we said in the October board meeting. We are, at this point in time, still finishing out the encumbrances, so you'll see there's some special intuition added, it's our projection for the whole year. So our admin assistant in the front office was busy putting in all of this stuff into the office of the principal. Did anyone have any questions on any of those items? At this point, there's no unanticipated revenue, because I just said the revenue was a few weeks ago, so at this time, there's nothing unanticipated. The only tax rate in SAU sixteen that's been set so far, in my knowledge, is Exeter. The others are still being worked on. But the school side of the tax rate input has been complete for several weeks now. And then I do, we did the trust funds to be added after June thirtieth, that is blank, because you will have to decide that as part of the budget process, as to what you want to put in those trust funds, as we progress through that. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, I put all of your prior year fund balances, meaning how much was left over at the end of the year to reduce to the following year's taxation. And keep in mind, fund balances are a combination of revenue more than planned and expenditures less than planned. So did anyone have any specific questions?
We use, we used the Sargent Trust last year.
Yeah, several times, a couple times.
Twice?
Yeah, two, two or three.
And that, is that specific to specific things that we can use the Sargent Trust for?
I'd have to pull the language.
I forget, I'm sorry.
Because so when the trust fund is created, you have to use it in the spirit of the trust fund, so for example, like, the retirement trust, we have, we can only use that for techs.
Over time, yep.
We cannot use it for technology. I do know at one point in time, we pulled the language of the Sargent Trust, and I believe it was pretty broad.
Yeah, because I remember it being pretty flexible, because we applied it for a couple things.
But I don't think we actually used it.
Used it, yeah, we just pulled it, and it was available for me to.
You proved up to.
Up to, and we didn't need to.
For the safety.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the, and the only reason I'm saying that is that could be a way to supplement if the language is correct.
It is, but just keep in mind, like, you'd also, you're going to have that increase down the road, and eventually, if you deplete the trust, if costs keep going up.
The forty-eight, six, seven, zero, the unassigned fund balance that carried over.
Yep.
Can that be applied to the two fourteen? No, okay.
So how that works is, so at the end of the year, we have a fund balance, and so then what the tax rate does is it takes your vote that you did that March for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yep.
And then it says, okay, you need, well, let's just say it's the, so what, our twenty-six budget was three point seven million dollars, right? We take, we say, okay, we need three point seven million dollars to operate the school this year. We know we have some revenue sources from like when parents pay for lunch, and when the state and federal government pay for lunch, or if we rent out the gym, or we have earnings on investment, if we have special aid, I don't think you do, but different types of aid. The delta between your budget and your revenues is what has to be raised in taxation, and that forty-eight thousand comes off the top.
Comes off the top, yeah.
And so it's not a check we write back to the town.
Right.
It's us saying, okay, you just have to pay us that much less next year.
Yeah, got it.
And it's a rolling.
Okay.
And so in a budget, we have to appropriate the funds, which is the authority, authority to expend, so even if you have the offsetting revenue, you still have to appropriate the funds, just like we have to appropriate the grant money, we have to appropriate the food service money, anything you wanna expend, you have to appropriate.
Okay.
And so it is a little bit different, because the expense side happens in the spring, the revenue happens in the fall, it doesn't do it together.
Doesn't do it together.
So did anyone have any questions?
You have trouble comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna close public comment, it is six twenty-two right now.
The manifestor right there, if you guys have.
We did, we're all set.
Are you ready?
No, just two of them. Any, any other questions for Molly? Tutorial every single time? I think we're ready to move on to the principal report.
Thank you. So we are currently in week, was it three or four, four, I believe, of our King Fisher Reading Challenge. We had a group come in last month, Cognia, is a nonprofit that we worked with over the summer as an SAU headband staff, and they offer to come into schools to advertise reading and get kids excited about readings, we had that assembly, we had a K two assembly and a three five assembly, and the gentlemen infused magic and excitement, and it was a really nice time for our kids, and then they were talking, they were told at the end about all the wonderful prizes they could win if they fill out those loggers and get those reading minutes going, so it's happening, the kids are excited about it, and, you know, the grand prizes will be drawn in the spring, there's multiple schools that we're kind of competing against. We are partnering with New Hampshire and Vermont, so he's got schools in both, in both states, and then he's got a main group and a Massachusetts group that are kind of going, so it's fun, and it's new and different this year, so we're, we're just gonna keep on talking about that. It's an eight-week challenge, so right before the holiday break, we should be finished with that, but we wouldn't know the grand prize winners until the spring, and fortunately, it's a Red Sox tickets and a Yuki tickets.
I told you, Ry wins, she's taking you, she's taking you on the monster, you're wearing Red Sox gear.
Is there a way, and maybe we can, we can, you know, recruit the PTO, but, like, to document or graph some of the minutes that the kids are, just so they could.
We're tracking, so it's all spreadsheet.
Yeah, but I'm saying like a visual for the kids, so that they could, I mean, it's, it's just tangible.
As a school?
As a school, yeah.
It's a good idea.
I mean, sticky notes creates tracking.
You can get almost like a, like a thermometer line graph thing that you just.
Yeah, just, so there's a visual for them, you know, and I, and it just, it's more, it's more literacy, right? You know, math literacy, it's creating the narrative, they could use that as a writing prompt.
Oh, I like it. Enrollment numbers as of last week, K twenty, twenty-four kindergarteners, eighteen first, eighteen second, twenty-six third, twenty-one fourth, twelve fifth, and for a total of one hundred and nineteen students. Our PTO had their annual Fall Festival a few weeks ago, and it was another wonderful, beautiful day outside. We had a number of sponsors this year, which we really wanna thank for sponsoring this event, and I have them all listed here, KMB Landscaping, JTB Construction and Remodeling, East Kingston Market, Luna Chicks, RB Allen Co., Amesbury Towing, MCE Construction and Development, Toptral Boutique, Health Zone Chiropractic, Roche Elite Sport Performance, Blake Acupuncture and Herbal Medicine, Middleton Supply, Junior Gym, ACU Bright and Adventure Travel and Cruising. So again, another wonderful event, and we appreciate everything the PTO does for our students and for our staff. I also have up on the screen the fall information for our benchmarking, and I'm also gonna talk about what we saw in the spring for our spring assessments, our SAS assessments. This is just another, we all know we do SAS, SAS testing in the, in the spring for all of our students, third to fifth grade, through the D O E, I just had that slide in there. So this is where, this is where we are last spring, and over the last three years, and in this area here, I compared it to the state proficiency percentages, and where we sit here at East Kingston, and then statewide. Third grade, for our third graders, it's the first time they take SAS, so it's a brand-new experience for them, and it's a grueling experience in many ways, but we did perform well, you know, across the board, especially as it relates to how students perform across the state. Third, a third-grade ELA, we were sixty, sixty-three percent proficient, you could see the last two years in third grade, fifty-five and fifty-six, so we're up significantly there. Grade four killed it in both, in both reading and math, which is awesome. Ninety-one, ninety-one percent of our fourth graders were proficient in ELA, and that is the reading and the writing portion compared to fifty-three percent of the students statewide. And then there's a really nice jump from twenty twenty-four, when they were in third grade compared to where they were in fourth grade. And same thing with fifth grade, seventy-one percent of our fifth graders last year were proficient compared to fifty-seven statewide, and then another big jump, fifty-five to seventy-one percent going from fourth to fifth grade.
So I, I just, in my head, I'm saying this out loud, so I'm clear, so those were last year's third graders who are current fourth graders, last year's fourth graders who are current fifth graders right now, and the fifth graders are in middle school right now.
Yes. In math, seventy-four percent of our third graders were proficient in math compared to fifty-two percent of our students across the state. Eighty-two percent of our, our grade four students last year proficient in math, fifty-two percent statewide, and six, sixty percent of our fifth graders last year compared to forty percent statewide. You know, we did see a decrease a little bit there, not sure why that decrease happened, but there was a five percent decrease from students jumping from fourth to fifth grade. But we're, you know, and, and then science, we've, we've proved every year, thirty-seven percent of fifth graders in New Hampshire last year were proficient in science, we made a steady, a steady increase in science over the last three years as a school, and performed much better than the rest of our students statewide.
And just asking, we can use this?
That was my question too.
Yeah, I mean, this data is, is telling, Brandon, the amount of work that's going into the school right now.
Yeah.
And that would be every child, teacher, human.
Yeah.
That works here, right? So it tells such a magnificent story.
Yeah, there's a lot of information floating around the community that does not align with this.
Yeah.
So I don't know, it could be a boiled-down version, easier to digest, I mean, it's pretty easy to digest, but.
When we put our presentation together for the.
Yeah, we've.
We're gonna, you know, we wanna.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, yep.
So, yeah, we're really happy about it, we still have work to do, but we're really excited where we are at.
I have to ask.
Yeah.
So the kiddos who didn't make proficient.
Yeah.
Right, are we seeing growth in those areas, right? You usually show us the red to yellow to green, it's coming, I love it, thank you.
So that's strictly I-ready, that's not gonna be.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So, and I, I say this every year, it didn't affect us last spring at all, we were above ninety-five percent student participation.
Participation.
But I always wanna highlight this, because sometimes, and it's happened to us in the past, if parents opt their children out, and we fall below ninety-five percent, those percentage points below ninety-five percent count as zeros for our school. So oftentimes, you know, we'll see the number of students that took the test compared to what is gonna be on the state websites, which is, counts zeros into that, so it didn't happen to us last year, because we had ninety-six percent, I think, of our students.
And so those numbers are valid numbers, yep, okay, great.
So we, we talk about this with PLCs a lot, and this is kind of what we're doing in our PLCs right now in wind time, I added this slide in here just to remind the board and our community, you know, as we're looking at PLCs, we have four main questions that we always talk about, what should students now be able to do, how will we assess progress towards mastery, how will we respond when students struggle, and how will we respond when students excel? So a lot of our wind blocks that we visited this year are based on these four questions. So our students take I-ready diagnostics three times a year, students of first through fifth grade take the I-ready math, and the reading diagnostic in the fall, winter, and spring. Kindergarten students, they don't take the math in the fall, but they do take the, I'm sorry, they don't take the reading in the fall, but they do take the math, winter and, and in the spring. We use this information in the fall and in the winter to help form our instruction and to development groups using that kind of data, and then the spring assessments serve as kind of where we are as the end of the year benchmark. So this is, this is our current students right now in math, and the yellow is always larger in, in the fall, we're gonna see that decrease significantly from fall to spring. But what this shows us here, the yellow and the green, is we have ninety-one percent of our students are ready for grade level instruction now, and they're getting that grade level instruction, one hundred percent, one hundred percent of our students are getting grade level instruction, but the yellow and the green students, they're ready and they're moving through it now. We have nine percent of our students that fall in the red, so that means they are two or three grade levels behind where they should be at this moment in time. So we were right around ninety-one percent last year, so we're, we're kind of heading the right direction. When we look at last year's spring, we reduced both the red and the yellow significantly, we're expecting to do the same thing again this year. The next slide is where we are right now, reading also ninety-one, sorry, ninety-one percent of our students are ready for grade level instruction, which we're happy to see that last year at this time, ninety, we were eighty-six percent in reading, are ready for grade level instruction, so we've, we've bumped that up five percent, which is exciting, and again, we'll see those numbers, the red and the yellow shrink hopefully from, from now until.
And Brandon, that, the difference between the ninety-four and one nineteen to twenty-five, essentially it's kindergarten class, right?
Yes. So other examples, we use the I-ready, we also use something called cadigans for assessments, and then within the classroom, we have hands-on learning, unit assessments, projects, celebrations of learning, cross-based units of instruction, like social studies and writing crossing over together with, with reading and writing, and play-based learning, especially for our younger students, and performance assessment. So we take all that information in addition to the benchmarking, and we sit down in our PLC meetings, and this year, for the first time, we're really making a big focus with our wind groups, and we develop wind groups. We have two lead teachers this year, Mr. Stevens is the K two lead, PLC leader, a teacher, and Mrs. Sousa, the three through five, they're doing an amazing job of facilitating and developing agendas, and really working with their grade level teams. Our focus in kindergarten this year, there's no specific wind block, it's built within their classroom, so the students are getting daily literacy and, and math instruction and intervention within that wind block, staff are pushing interims to provide that intervention or extension if needed, and they're doing this in-class personalized support for each student, and they're helping build those foundational skills of both reading and math. A little bit different in first and second grade, this is where we really took that data and formed wind groups. For the students that are currently in the literacy wind block, and these wind blocks are gonna change six, every six to eight weeks, they may stay in that, in that same, same focus group, or they may have kind of graduated from that and moved on to something different. But right now, the literacy groups in first and second grade are focusing on building word recognition skills, phonological awareness, high-frequency insight words, phonics for accurate decoding, they're also working on strengthening their language comprehension, identifying math, sorry, main ideas, retelling key details, making predictions and inferences, and using text, textual evidence to support their answers. We also have a group of students that are receiving math wind, and they are learning flexible strategies to add and subtract within twenty to build fluency, and they're solving complex word problems using strategies as a scale for problem solving. Grade three through five, they, they have a large chunk of students that are working at word problems, so they are strengthening, strengthening their addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division skills, they are applying these skills to multi-step word problems using cubes, which helps them analyze, plan, and evaluate their problem-solving steps, and we do have some other students that are not really focusing on math, but they're working on their foundational reading skills to become more independent readers and writers. So, I mean, this has been like a real work in progress to really start from scratch as far as our PLCs go, and eventually develop wind blocks. I mean, this has been like a real work in progress to really start from scratch as far as our PLCs go and eventually develop wind blocks. But it really started years ago with focusing on assessments and data and really having those conversations within our teams to build from year to year to year. So you're seeing through our assessments in the spring, SAS assessments, I-ready assessments, all those great numbers are because of all this kind of work that's happening behind the scenes. And our teachers get, you know, they don't get enough credit for all the work that they really do for the kids in this building. So we're, we're excited, they're happy, um, but we're always focusing on improving bit by bit. And I think, um, you know, we're gonna see even better scores as, especially those reading kids that started with OG in kindergarten. They are currently in the second grade right now. I think, I think they're the second grader right now that started, uh, the first group that started with OG. So, am I making sense?
Yeah, because they, yeah, it's two years.
I mean, you were, you were dabbling in the program with the threes and fours, not currently now, but you, you're saying the real structured space of it.
The ones that started kindergarten.
Yeah, are in second grade right now, yeah. Um, I just have a question, Brandon.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, PLCs, right, they get together, they ask those four questions. They're using data to, to make informed decisions. How often are they actually assessing the kids in their six to eight weeks span? And can they graduate from there?
Yes.
Or can the kid move?
So they're progress monitoring throughout.
Okay, right, informative, yep.
And they're gonna come together either this week or next, um, depending on which group, but they're gonna take a look at kind of where the students are now. We're looking at changing up every six to eight weeks if needed.
Okay.
There are gonna be some students we know are gonna continue.
Staying in that same space.
Area focus, yeah.
Okay.
But we also know there are students that kind of graduated out of it.
Okay.
And are ready for either more of an extension or if there's another skill that they need some intervention on, they're gonna go that route.
So they're being, well, formatively assessed throughout the progress, throughout the process. And if the, the PLC or the wind teachers are seeing progress, they could graduate out.
They could, yeah.
And get assessed to go into a different group.
Yes.
Or if they're not, if they're struggling, they actually could be reassessed and moved to a more appropriate space. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Molly.
Thanks, Molly. Is that it for the pres?
That's it, yep.
On sales report, okay. Um, so we're gonna move on to board reports and committee reports. Um, we had, uh, we're, I'll just start with policy committees, committee. Um, we had our meeting on October sixteenth and we revised or reviewed, um, current policies. Do I need to say if they were reviewed or revised?
No, you don't have to, it's all in your packet that you received tonight, so it's indicated right there.
Okay, well, I, I can, so we, um, policy code AC, um, we, was a revision. Policy code ACA was a review. Policy code ADC was a revision. Policy code GBAM was a revision. Policy code IHBCA was a revision. Policy code IMDA was a review. Um, and that should be all of them, correct?
Correct, and IHBCA, just as a reminder, is just for the cooperative. Um, so it's in your packet, but it's not in on your agenda because you don't need to approve it tonight.
So, um, in that meeting, we had, you know, that, that policy committee, um, actually is quite, let me see, enlightening, I'll, I'll use that word, you know, it's policy, right? So there's, there's a, you're reading policy, but there's a lot of dialogue that is going on and it's actually quite, um, nice to hear people's different, uh, insights and perspectives. So when we're reviewing or revising, um, it's just great to see this so thoughtful, yeah. So we have to approve these?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, can I make the motion?
Okay.
Oh, and I make a motion to approve the, um, reviewed or revised policies I just read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, no update on safety and security, um, still waiting to have our next meeting scheduled and I don't know, Alice, if you have any idea when that might be for anything, but I think we're probably gonna be probably after the new year at this point, so. And then I can jump down to strategic planning committee just while I'm talking. We have a meeting on December third and the agenda for that is very short. It's just really to go over the, um, metrics that Chris and team had, uh, discussed during the, um, September meeting that I was not able to attend, so. Nothing more to report at this stage, but, um, should have more information probably in our December meeting.
Okay. Um, the superintendent evaluation committee, uh, we'll, just met. Um, they are working with, uh, the superintendent on his goals and phase one of going out in the three sixty, which is basically asking all, um, SLT members and principals to work in three particular, or give their feedback for three particular spaces, um, that the superintendent has asked to, or his, he has set his goals for. So we're in that phase of getting feedback from, from all leadership, um, in SAU sixteen. The next phase will be, we'll go to each of the boards and each, each board will, will look at those three, um, spaces. And then, um, we will compile that information and present it, I think it's in May or April. So the timeline is moving through, um, our next meeting is January twenty-third. That we will meet and compile the data from the leadership team within SAU sixteen and then move to the separate boards.
Can I just bring up, uh, agenda item topic? Uh, this is like the second time I think I've noticed this, that the goals, they're at the top still, but they, didn't we always have those part of the agenda to cover up on? They usually follow.
So yes, our committee reports, it would fall under our committee reports that now that we would go to our actual S, our East Kingston boards that we're all on. So after the, um, district committees, we would go to the East Kingston committee. And I know that the, the academic goal, we are set to meet sometime this month. I was told November.
Set to meet, right.
So the first goal of academic progress, um, I asked that last time, when, when the meeting was going to be and I thought the answer was November. Did I miss the meeting?
No, the board meeting.
The board meeting, that's where the discussion happens.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Like right now?
Yeah.
Oh.
Like five minutes ago.
Oh, okay. So my feedback was right then. Present, okay.
I can go, just, we'll go this way, this is sort of out of order a little bit, but, uh, goal three, the, um, multi-year capital improvement plan, Brandon, thank you for sending the updated, um, shared doc over that is sort of listing out everything that we have either completed as part of that monthly year plan or that we are sort of earmarking for, you know, this year and, and next year. There's a couple of things on there, uh, that I noticed that seemed like, uh, were maybe some things that we hadn't necessarily discussed before, but, um, so I don't know if there were warrants, maybe a separate meeting to kind of go through that at some point.
I would say, you know, yes, between me, who else?
Okay. Um, yeah, so that's it.
Community engagement, no real updates at this time. Yeah.
I have a question, did the wood chips get delivered?
Yeah, they're spread.
And they're spread, okay.
Yeah, but now that it's November, we're not gonna put anything out.
Okay.
Until spring.
Okay, and, and have we had a conversation with the director of SST? Like where are we with, um, asking about the, that community involvement with, are, are there any CTE teachers or students that want to?
Uh, we have one teacher that's participating, um, they're gonna be the, the group that's going to make, um, the enclosed whiteboard that's gonna go out there.
Okay.
So they're, they're gonna do that for us.
Okay, and, um, my last question, JT, is working with our Eagle Scout that came last time. I don't know if you've been in touch.
I haven't heard anything from him, but I talked to him at the end of that meeting and told him.
Okay.
Resources or materials or anything I can help.
Awesome, okay, great. Anything else? Okay. New business?
Okay, so we, uh, I think I emailed or maybe talked with, maybe not, one or two of you about, um, the school district clerk. We're still in need of a school district clerk, so this is just another pitch or reminder or ask from the community. It involves, um, making sure that the warrants are posted properly in the necessary locations in the community. It involves attending the school board deliberative session and taking minutes. There are a couple of other requirements, making sure that the, uh, counting the ballots on voting day, that kind of thing. There's a three hundred and fifty dollar stipend, so just again, um, something that, that position is not yet filled, so, um, a request to the community.
Is this the budget advisory committee person that you sent me, role, or is that separate?
That's separate, that's different, yep, that's, that's what the email is, right?
Right.
Thank you for reminding me. Um, so just putting it out there again, and if I can answer any questions, um, I'm happy to do that if, if you.
So we need, we need that person for.
Deliberate.
Deliberate, right?
Yeah. Um, can we throw something in the newsletter, Brandon? Maybe a parent's out there that would.
Or can we nominate, what'd we do last year, we nominate?
I wanna, I don't wanna misspeak, I, I think maybe that, I'm not sure.
I think that's what we did last year, like we put it out there, nobody signed up for it, then we nominated and then they accepted.
Yep.
Uh, it was actually, I believe, yes, you're right, but I think it was actually at the deliberative, Michelle Larson.
Yes, Michelle has done it in the past.
We didn't have anybody.
Okay, so this is different than the, I'm sorry, I was thinking the moderator.
No, Pete.
Pete's still doing the moderation, right, for deliberative or do we, is that separate?
It's a different role.
It's a different role, okay.
So anyway, just putting out there.
Confusing the two things, sorry.
If you hear of anyone who might be interested, you can.
Okay.
Certainly point them in my direction if I can answer.
I'm just thinking of ways to, to.
To get it out there.
To get it out there, like if we can put it in.
That's a point.
I can work with you on how to.
You know, and then, and then we can, it's part of the advertisement too, that deliberative is gonna be whatever date.
Yep.
February, whatever it is. Yeah.
Yeah, good point. And then for the January hearing, um, we need to set a snow date. So we have all of our other dates set, but we, we're required to have a snow date, so the, the hearing is on the.
And that's different from the deliberative and the snow date for the deliberative.
Right, it's a public hearing.
Right.
Right.
It's right, it's the public hearing and so ours is scheduled for the
January meeting?
January twelfth.
So that's a regular board meeting, right? We're just meeting.
Yeah, we have the board meeting afterwards.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, so you need a, we need a snow date for January twelfth.
Right, so my recommendations just based on other meetings that are already scheduled, um, would be January fifteenth or January twentieth. Probably the fifteenth if that works just because it's.
Same week.
Closer.
Yeah. That works for me.
So January fifteenth?
Do we need to vote on that?
You can do vote or consensus, whatever.
Works for me. JT.
JT, you good?
Yeah. Make sure to get that on the calendar.
Any old business? No, the public hearing actually.
Would be.
A public hearing would, would be five.
Five?
Five. Public hearings at five, yep, and then it would lead into our five-thirty meeting, we just have the board meeting after.
Which would still include public input, right?
It could, yes.
So essentially it could be an hour straight of public feedback. Okay.
Uh, old business?
None.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Paul doesn't have any business.
That's sweet. I feel like it pours rain here every time we have a school board meeting.
Um, so, so with that, I would like to adjourn the meeting, it is now six fifty, um.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.